All right, it is 2:00 PM on May 30th, 2017, and we will call this informal session of the Amhill County Board of Directors to order. And I have in front of me a list of things we're talking about today. The request for approval of an amendment, amendment number one to an agreement number 147926 between the Amhill County District Attorney and State of Oregon Department of Human Services for a one-year extension of the current contract whereby the state reverses some expenses related to providing legal representation to DHS dependency cases effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, not to exceed $105,390. And does anybody wish to speak to that?
Yeah, that, I read that and I looked at that and I think it's a valid time, not knowing what's going to happen a year from now, to only extend that contract for your stated information.
Okay, is there any concern under? Okay, so that will move to the consent agenda for Thursday. And...
And as an add-on from Christian?
Okay.
Or an addition to what was in there?
Okay. And then the next thing I have on my list is a request for approval of an amendment, amendment number one to an agreement between the Amhill County Community Justice, Juvenile Division, and Higher Ground Counseling, Inc. for juvenile sex offender treatment effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, with a maximum amount, and that says maximum did say not to exceed, but I'm assuming we're meaning that same thing.
Maximum.
$10,000. Anybody wish to speak to that?
I'll just speak to that one. That one actually, as far as service wise isn't a change. Higher Ground is the company that was formed by the representative we used before and three other representatives. They, four of them got together and formed Higher Ground. So basically, it's the same, it's the same company or the same guy that's been doing it, but it's a different, it's a different company.
The only question I had in reviewing the information materials I had was they were very vetting about the qualifications of the gentleman that we were, and not so expansive on the qualifications of the three that he went together with to make the partnership. So I would just recommend that we make certain that all of the parties to this partnership are of equal caliber.
So I don't believe that's in there now. This was an amendment to their existing agreement that was extending it for another year and adding one other service type, which was some general consulting work that they needed. I don't know that it says much of anything about requiring or reviewing minimum certifications. We can certainly look at that.
Yeah, it was, the reason I say that is that when talking about the person with whom we had the original contract, they spoke to his qualifications to perform this service, and then he now joined with three others, and there was no statement to that effect concerning the other three. I just want to make sure that we've done the same vetting.
Sure, like I said, that's not something I've looked into or was aware of before now. I can look at that between now and Thursday, and if there's any issues, I can report back to the board on Thursday.
And also because, you know, they increased the cost and...
They did.
Obviously, we do have more people available to us. I just want to make sure they're equal quality.
Yeah, I believe he should conduct the work, if you look at Christian, he should conduct the work based on the, based on the knowledge he had, or whoever does do this work under that new Higher Ground has to have at least a minimum of the same qualifications.
But anybody working those capacities ought to have minimum qualifications.
So do they have the same thing he had, though?
I don't know if they have the same thing he had, but that would still be, they would still be minimum qualified. You just work to work with this population.
That was the only question.
Are you concerned about licensing primarily, or the years of experience?
Just the level of competence, because we, you know, we're increasing the amount we're paying for the service. And so I want to make sure that, that, just a little clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I assume.
Maintain that for Thursday.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem. Okay, the next thing I have is a request for approval of agreement between Amhill County and Tom O'Connor to continue to provide technical assistance to community justice and the Evidence-Based Making Initiative Policy Team effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 at $125 an hour. And I'm not familiar with this.
He's been to Lipstick a number of times.
Right.
And he has spoken.
I'm familiar with him. I didn't realize we were paying him.
Well, we've had a contract with him for the last seven, five years.
Seven years. And I think since EBDMI is so critical to what we do, and as I say, I did have a chance to talk to him on Lipstick meetings, that I would say that we go ahead and approve that.
No, we're, we are considered the poster people for Lipstick. All right, very good, that will then move. Request for approval of a resolution honoring Radio Second Class Gary Bradbury Hodgson, USN, and the 73 who their souls lost, the USS Destroyer Franklin, Frankie Evans, the destroyer USS Frankie Evans, who gave of their lives in service for their country. And this is a resolution that I read. There it is. I knew it was in there. This is a resolution honoring Radio Second Class Gary Bradbury Hodgson, USN, and the 73 other souls lost on the USS Frankie Evans, who gave of their lives in service of their country. Whereas on June 3rd, 1969, destroyer USS Frankie Evans, while on a Southeast Asia treaty organization maneuver, was struck by the aircraft carrier HMAS Melbourne. And whereas destroyer USS Frankie Evans was cut in half with the former sex ed ship sinking in 1,100 fathoms of water within two minutes. And whereas 74 lives were lost, including Oregon sailor, Radio Second Class Gary Bradbury Hodgson. And whereas none of the 74 men lost during the Vietnam War were recognized on the Vietnam Wall in Worcester, DC. And whereas the Frankie Evans Association for many years has been and is still, and still is loving in Worcester, DC, to have these 74 men added to the Vietnam Wall. And whereas in the interim, the Frankie Evans Association has taken upon themselves to place a memorial in each state where a sailor was lost. And whereas American Legion Post 21 of McMinnville has been selected by the Frankie Evans Association to place a monument in its rose garden to remember the 74 sailors lost as at sea on June 3rd, 1969, and now therefore be a result of the Amhill County Board of Commissioners as hereby recognize the placement of a memorial in honor of Radio Second Class Gary Bradbury Hodgson in the American Legion Post 21 rose garden on July 8th, 2017, then this first day of June, 2017. Do I have any concerns about this? Okay, there is a table. Where did I read it? I'm about to...
Do you need a pen, Commissioner?
Pardon?
We can find it.
And of course, all the commissioners are welcomed out on July 8th for the, for the actual placement dedication of the memorial.
What time is that?
If you know, well, it's 2:00. And if you know the story behind the Frank Evans, it's quite a story. The reason they weren't put on the Vietnam Wall is because since they were hit by an Australian battleship, it wasn't considered war loss casualties. So there's been a big push to get them on the, well, the Vietnam Memorial. So they'd like it for now to put one in each state.
Okay, so that will also be on there. And let's see, I have here, is this?
This is the ratification of the YCDAA.
Collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah. We've discussed this before. The union has ratified the contract, so this is before the board for your final approval. I believe that should be signed by the union president.
It is. All right, so this will also be on the agenda for Thursday. Any questions or comments, concerns? Very good. Interested persons, Christian? Notice intent to award Palm Creek Bridge Consulting Engineering Services project.
Yeah, the Public Works Department did an RFP. These are for the consulting engineering and construction consultation services for the repair of the Palm Creek Bridge. They did an RFP, they have one response. Obeck was the responding contractor. They were the same contractor that performed repair work on this same bridge eight, nine years ago.
Right.
But we did go through the review process. Their RFP meets the minimum requirements and has met with the approval of the review committee for this. So it's ready to, for you to authorize this notice of intent to award to Obeck.
And this is the first time ODOT is working with this type of project, where they're sending us the money and we are, we are the general.
I understand it's, it's an approach that ODOT is trying now to pursue more of the services back down to the local level.
Yeah, and my only comment, and I think we should be followed up on, and I've asked the question of several people. What happens if the million dollars they sent to us is not adequate? Who's going to pick up the balance of repairing this bridge?
Mr. Chair, that would be a question for our road director, our county engineer. I honestly don't know.
And I don't either, but it's...
That's true.
I think it's very important. This is something that we didn't have any choice in. ODOT said this is what we're going to do on this particular project. And they did a, they did a pretty extensive review of the work necessary, and I'm confident that it's going to be in the ballpark. But I don't want to see us having to take into our road fund for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to finish a project that they... So I think...
I'd like to keep this off the consent agenda. We can talk, I know that Bill is not available on Thursday, but perhaps John would be able to come to the formal session and speak to that.
I would either like them to speak to what conversation they've had or what assurances they were given, or at least have us get some assurances from ODOT that we're not hanging out here, because I haven't seen any review of the work to be done. So I don't want to get us in the middle of something that we can't get out of.
Yeah, again, I would have to defer to John or Bill on those matters. I could follow up with them in the meantime and see if John would be able to come on Thursday morning.
We can always pull a diff, you know, get a satisfactory answer between them. That's all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is from Silas, attached to agreement with Benton County by Population Health Data Analytics. I read through this, but Mary, maybe you can give us the gist of this?
Okay. A while back, went to a presentation that was given by the folks at Benton County. They have a tool and they have the staff to do population health data analysis. And I questioned whether or not we needed that, whether or not we wanted to pay for something like that. Do we need more data? We seem to have an awful lot of data. What are we doing with this data? But just in talking to Lindsay Manfred, Public Health, and Silas, if we were to try to duplicate this here to try to get this information, we wouldn't be able to do it for the amount of money that we're going to be paying them. We've got this in place and they're using it. The public health does, the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan, those are things that are pretty labor intensive. And I think with, with their staff, they'd be able to do that. And again, if this could aid in our efforts to find pockets, perhaps of people who've got different health issues. So I would recommend that we go ahead and support this.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't have any problem negotiating with the jail bands with them. It seems bigger than that, too.
We'll do a quid pro quo.
Yeah, quid pro quo. Do you want how much for what?
That was a hit, so we'll have to, that's a commentary for discussion. Okay, so that will move on to the consent agenda. And then I know Brian has been sitting here patiently waiting to give us a, an update on emergency preparedness, emergency management, and probably some results of our, the event we had a couple weeks ago.
Yes, thank you.
Take it away.
So just want to give a recap of the exercise. And obviously, this is not from the final report. Every exercise comes with an after-action report that covers the objectives and the goals that were reached and the shortcomings, and it goes from there. It's more in-depth, obviously. So back on May 12th, we had our full-scale exercise. It was, it revolved around flooding and debris management issue, mainly in the west, west end of the county, in an effort to try and test coordinating with Grand Ron Tribal and the city of Amhill, who had a separate water incident that affected their entire city, and how we coordinated together and were able to get resources. And they were, you know, help with shelter, sheltering, and how we were able to try and funnel resources up to Amhill. As I mentioned earlier, every exercise has its objectives. So in this case, there were five objectives. I won't talk about them all, but most, they were basically, we wanted to establish and operate a county EOC within one hour. Obviously, in a drill, you kind of think, well, you're already in place in this EOC. What are you talking about? Well, it's to be able to get up and running, have your incident action plan going and in communication with, with other folks that you need help with or that may need help or help you. So another one was to develop that I, Incident Action Plan, IAP. I'm trying not to talk in letters and acronyms. Because the further I get into emergency management, the more, the more I...
You're drinking the water.
Yeah, typical of that. So, so I will, I will try and refrain from that. If I stray, I apologize. Establish emergency hotline for the public to be able to phone in tips and backup communications. So in the, in the incident action plan, we were able to complete it on time, so that objective was met. It's not always an easy task, because there's a lot of information that the planning team and the incident management team has to come up with and all the data that's, and info that's coming in from the field. You have to be able to prepare for the next, the current operational period if it's brand new, but then also look ahead at the next operational period. It shouldn't go longer than 12 hours. So, and we were, we were lucky enough to have the knowledge of previous incident management team members to be able to mentor and move the newer folks forward and, hey, have you thought about this? And move them in a, in a good direction. Emergency hotline, we had two four-line phone banks up. So basically, eight lines available for folks to be able to call in. And we had a, the role players, if you will, were off-site in the, downstairs, I believe, in the courthouse, and they were able to call in and say, what about this? What about that? You know, I'm Joe Citizen and we're having this issue. They worked perfect. I worked with IT early on to identify which phones and make sure that they were, they were set up correctly to work as a hunt group, a new thing that I learned, that, you know, this one's busy, hey, the next one needs to ring. So that worked great. And then establish backup communications with, via Ares, worked great. There were a couple of issues with Ares. They weren't able to send or receive digital material to the hospitals, who were also had some radio, radio folks. But that was, the digital side of things was strictly a program issue at the hospitals. They, they've looked at that, they'll be addressing that. And then the other was the antennas on top of the building were just dwarfed by some of the buildings around here, so it really affected us, our ability to get out. But they were able to find a workaround on that, and that was, came in the form of the radio trailer. They were able to set up a repeater from there. So Commissioner Starett and I had the opportunity, and you can weigh in on these and, or talk about whatever you want to add afterwards. I would appreciate that. But like we spoke earlier, private organization involvement was huge in this one. It was, it was a good feeling to be able to have representatives from McMinnville Waterline Recology present. I believe with both of those companies, we had eight, roughly eight, nine folks from their places, which was cool. It was good to, in my position, being new to the position, it's good to start those relationships and have those relationships being built. You know, we can progress from there. An exercise is an exercise, not everything's perfect. There might be takeaways on, in their perspective, that we need to change. And I've explained to them, hey, you got to give me that feedback so we can, we can work, work together and get through it. I touched on the Ares topic. One of the things that really was an objective, but it came out to be a hindsight objective, was conversations with county council and the emergency declaration process and ways that we can streamline that. It was kind of when Commissioner Starett and I were talking about it, because you were in a, in a meeting. So we were talking about it, it was kind of, well, what form do I use? And much like Christian, my conversation was like, well, what, if this, then what? So we're going to work together, I believe, to try and streamline that process and maybe make it a, more of a checkbox. Because as you work down the line of progression or succession in the county, and you get down, it's got to be easy for, for folks that, if, you know, if you guys aren't available, so let's work on that. And another thing would be, that was identified, was the potential, we have to look at ordinance 883 and see if there needs to be some adjustments made in language with it, with the emergency management now being out of the sheriff's office. Does the language need to be changed? We don't know. We're in early talks on that, and the sheriff is involved in that also. Just, you know, if it doesn't need to change in the intent, and the language covers it, then why change it? But a conversation we need to have upfront anyways, because that, that delegation of authority is pretty, pretty powerful and pretty important to have in place and correct. One of the big takeaways, two of the big takeaways from the, the exercise were, obviously, you guys all know, facilities, facility-related. We were pretty crammed in there, pretty tight, and that wasn't even a full incident management team. Basically, we had operations and planning sections only. We didn't have finance or logistics. So, you know, enough on that. The other one was position-specific training. And Commissioner Starett and I briefly spoke earlier about incident management teams and getting those folks in place ahead of time and having them properly trained. Not only, that's going to accomplish a couple of things. It's going to help the county recover in a time of disaster, recover quickly, which allows us to help the citizens in their recovery. They're not going to recover without us being able to run government. And that's not a control thing, that's just, we're mandated to give services. So identifying who's involved in that incident management team and how, at the time of the disaster is not the time to be making phone calls and going, hey, can you come in and work on my, in my EOC? No, I'm sorry, I can't. You know, so, so those are things, and baby steps, we'll get there. It's not something that we, you know, need to finish by tomorrow, but we need to take baby steps and make sure it's right. There's a couple of other things in place. We talked to McMinnville and potentially getting other agencies involved in an, in an incident management team concept that would allow for a larger operation, a long-term operation, and probably be able to kind of ease the burden on the local jurisdictions, whoever contributes to these, to this team, you know, so they're not really concentrated and dedicated for the entire time. So, so getting those things in place would be good, you know. We, we learn, learn from this and we're going to apply some things, you know. We, the debris management plan was one of the, updating the debris management plan was one of the things identified, but we knew that was coming. We're in the process of, we're right in the middle of the project on the regional debris management operations plan. So that's going to be probably August, I think it's late August, that is the final, final version. And you guys all got the email that I sent out about roles and responsibilities. And I, I sent that, anybody that was listed, I sent that to each department head with those roles and responsibilities, looking for feedback on that.
And Brian, about 15 years ago, when emergency management was made more of a priority, we did have blue teams and red teams, and we had county individuals assigned to those teams. And they were very well-trained in their positions. And it was a huge focus of the county at the time. And we've kind of, you know, gone away from that. So I'm happy to hear you talk about that. But, you know, it'll be important for the commissioners to reinforce that with employees, that that's an important priority. And I think there's a lot of training online that employees can do, you know, as they have time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think one of the things is, and Commissioner Starett and I spoke about it, was identifying in the time of a disaster or emergency, who is essential, who isn't. You know, and, and one thing we did talk about, and it just came to mind, is, and how does that play with CBAs and, and, you know, where, what is that going to do on contracts? And, you know, a lot of identifying these, these folks for these positions, I don't want this fear to be out there that it's going to be this time cumbersome position that's going to take away from the, each department, because that's not, you know, the initial training and one or two times a year.
Right.
And just so we're, we're all on the same page, and we might need some on-the-job refresher training, which is a lot different than on-the-job training itself, you know. And it's a, it's a good thing. We'll make, we'll make progress on this, and it's fun. And we did have a conversation about COOP and continuity of operations. And, and so I'm looking forward to moving forward with that, because that's pretty, pretty important.
And we've tried to improve language and job descriptions as well, that includes that, those roles, so that is a part of employees' position descriptions.
And we, we, I just, I'll throw this in there. We had, you know, as I'm calling around, hey, can you play? Can you play? Can you play? No, 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 yes, yes, no, 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 you know. And we get to the clerk's office, and no, we can't. And it, nothing to do with them, I mean, I completely get it. We scheduled it during an election.
Yes.
So, what better time to...
They're loving that.
Yeah, it's like, oh, great.
But see, that, emergency is going to happen when it happens. And we all have to be ready. And we have to recognize the fact that we're all not going to be able to get to where we're supposed to be because of the incident. So we have to have multiple people able to step in. So it is, it's critical to the ongoing nature. The first thing everybody has to do is make sure their families are okay. That's going to be number one. But then, how do they get to where they're supposed to be and where they need it? Because, you know, we're going to have difficulty. So I think the more, at your level, you're developing this umbrella, if you will, and engaging with us and then with all the department heads, is just absolutely critical to what's going to happen. And it doesn't have to be the big one. I mean, I went to a workshop just this last week. They're dealing with this August 21st...
The eclipse.
The eclipse.
There's going to be an eclipse?
And they're, and they're over there in eastern Oregon. And they're, and they're over there in Eastern Oregon, but they've got this small community that's looking at about a hundred thousand people coming in and how they deal with it. And, you know, it's, even though it's not an emergency, it's an event and it's going to stress and tax their resources. So we need to recognize that there are any number of things that could call to play our emergency preparedness. So I really appreciate the, the activity, but also the fact that we are going to look at re-initiating this continuity of services.
Yeah. Couple things, Brad, I guess I have questions. One of the things I've learned way on my long time as a firefighter and an emergency manager, on private side and the public side is, does the county, is it your intent that maybe six months from now, a year from now, as we get this initial work out, that we will have a unannounced exercise? Because that's where you really realize, where you come up with a scenario and then somebody calls, somebody calls for that scenario and you find out that when you practice in exercises and you get ready for an exercise, they usually go pretty good because you're ready for an exercise. You put people in a situation where they're not ready for the exercise and that hour you talked about the A B, that hour could go to four hours because they're not ready for it. That's one thing I learned. And the other thing I think of the county's standpoint that I think all the commissioners here realize and, and our administrator realizes is that there's a big difference between disaster planning and business continuity. Like this, we found one in Oregon Mutual years ago when I was there that we had, we had the greatest plans in the world. We went, flew two people to Boulder, Colorado, to IBM, loaded our system on IBM's computers, started running our system, something that simple. And you know what we realized? All of our checks were produced off of our printers, blank stock. We had no way for our vendors, like if we had kind of emergency checks or something, we had no way of, we had no way of doing checks. I mean, so when you talk business continuity, especially in the finance area, that's very important because we can have the county up and running, they're running, but if we have to do a special check, a payroll check or anything, we can't, we can't do it. And if you can't do it, you know how FEMA tracking things is, is if you can't track it with FEMA, the right expenses, you're not going to get reimbursed.
Yeah. And Commissioner Starett and I talked about, about that specific issue earlier. As far as the unannounced drills or exercises, there's two schools of thought on that. One is, yeah, you can really see what, like you pointed out, how things work unannounced and it's drilled into somebody's, an employee or a department's head on what they need to do. The, the second school of thought was, let's just take a, an emergency evacuation drill. An unannounced drill, are they going to, oh, this is just a drill again. Are they going to take that stance? So I think, I don't have any plans at this point to do unannounced drills or exercises because I think in the planning process, which can take months, in fact, this, this latest exercise was started before, the planning for it started before I even filled this position. If you have those objectives in mind and use it as an education piece, you're going to expand that knowledge base anyway. So we want to make sure that it's done correctly and people know that they, they have the, the time where they make the mistake and then the time that they're not making the mistake or it's corrected and they learn from it. So, so I think, you know, again, two schools of thought. At this point, I don't, I don't have any plans for that. And as far as the disaster planning and COOP, you know, I, yeah, they're, they're kind of the end of the spectrum. They, they both, I think the disaster planning is, should involve everybody and the clearing house should be emergency management for the training and the, and the resources. And COOP is the same thing. Each department needs to identify their needs and, and go from there. I agree 100% about the finance piece because if you can't pay your employees for, for their work, they're not going to work. Or, or, you know, what's going to be their drive to come in and, and complete their, they're, they're going to pay attention more towards their own. Completely get it.
Well, what I just heard from the first exercise, I definitely liked the way that you and the county are going, I think. And I would call for a progress until you know, even till you know what you're doing. Cause I agree with the two areas of thought. Do you educate or do you scare? You know, and as long as we spend all the time to make sure our staff gets educated, what they need to be educated, we have the right program, then I think what we, we'll probably find.
Well, I think drilling is critical. I mean, when you, when that emergency hits, we want muscle memory to take over because if you've got to stop and think about it, you're going to freeze. I mean, why do you, but if you've rehearsed it, at least you have a, an inkling of the idea, this is what I need to do. And it makes a significant difference. So whether it's a, a non-announced or an announced, it's just that practicing, here's what I would do in this situation. And it gives you, it gives your muscles, gets them trained. This is where I'm going.
Yeah. The EOC is critical. Not having a full EOC is, is, right, same video, we're like, because we have all the audio, video, we need a police department, wonderful EOC. But if we don't have a place where we can have an EOC, we're bound to fail before we can start.
Well, one of the good things about the, you know, over at Public Works, getting that up and running, and we were talking today about the fact that the grant process does designate, FEMA designate money for either refurbishing or planning or moving. So I think that's kind of nice for us to factor in when we realize we're going to be moving.
Get all of that. And that's going to be happening sooner than later. I mean, we, we've got that commitment in place for that use of that building and that's going to be, it will be definitely a great place to have it located and it will give us ample space to really put on a full blown exercise.
I know it's just great to have, you know, John, there's somebody that can devote full time to EOC, so it's just great. Trying to do a great job.
And I hope, I appreciate that. And I hope that, one of my goals is to be able to bring training to our county to, to keep, to keep our folks up to speed and not have to travel and not have to look outside. Let's bring the folks in from outside agencies. Hey, we're hosting this event. So with, with that, with that space, we might, you know, be able to accommodate that much, much better.
Did you have anything from our meeting earlier that you wanted to add?
Oh, just the update on E N S, which basically is it's moving along at, you know, glacier speed, but efforts are being made for us to get the final pieces in with Christian and, and all of that, but it's, it's coming.
Slow, but sure.
And I just wanted to add that, because I don't know if Commissioner else knew this, but a few years ago, we did put some significant funds into developing business continuity plans for all of our departments. So we do have them in place, but we need to revisit them and update them. Yeah.
Do you want to talk about the exercising of a COOP, that conversation we had earlier? Or do you want to save that for later?
Let's save that one.
Okay.
Commissioner says let's save that.
Save that one in our back pockets.
Wait till you guys hear this one.
For another day.
Yeah. I hope it was your idea and not hers.
It was. So I'll take, I'll take the heat for it.
We're safe. Thank you, Brian. You're doing a great job and it's nice to have you there.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate the support.
Well, if you don't have where you look for.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I could, but it's just not as comfortable as this. How you doing, Dave?
Good, all right.
Thanks, Brian. Good to be here.
Yes. It doesn't.
See you later.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian?
No wonder I've got a.
Are you going to be in the office this afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're. Oh, okay. Are we going to do that executive session? Okay. So I'm going to recess the.